I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Ashley, can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Davies, Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord.
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Secoys.
Here.
Mayor Davies is absent.
Thank you. Can we have her invocation by Pastor Kyle Phillips from Grace Fellowship? Could you all stand, please?
Thank you. Yeah, Lord Jesus, it is good to gather, Lord, to exercise faithful stewardship over the, Lord, concern for our city. I just pray that you give us, Lord, just sensitivity and wisdom. Lord, give us the ability to see broad perspectives, to deliberate rightly over what you have for our community. Lord, we do thank you for your faithfulness and just ask that you bless these proceedings for your glory. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge allegiance? Phil?
Salute. Pledge. I pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just for all.
We have our consent agenda. Let me see if I've got this working properly. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do we have any comment from the public? No. And council members?
Motion to approve consent as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Secoys.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord.
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote. Motion carried.
I feel like I'm in elementary school. When you raise your hand and say, yes, there you go. Okay, do we have any audience written or oral communications?
Nothing written.
Okay, the city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and the organization or persons represented, if any. To ensure accuracy and minutes, please fill out a speaker's card at the podium. Comments directed to any item on the agenda should be made at the time the item is called for discussion by the mayor. Questions on non-agenda items directed to the council or staff should be first submitted to the city clerk in written form no later than 12:00 p.m. Do we have any audience comments? Okay, council?
No.
Ashley? Oh, any motion? I guess we have to do that.
We did.
We're good? Okay.
I'm six.
Oh, are we already on item six? Did we pass the consent item?
We're good.
We're good? Okay, number six is RSI disbursement and bills from May 10 through the 31st, 2023. Do we have any audience questions? Council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ashley?
Councilmember Secoys.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord.
Yes.
4-0 vote. Motion carried.
Item number seven, we have investment policy update. And Hamed Jones will introduce and explain, please.
Thank you. The item for you is the annual investment policy update that's required by California government code. In last year's investment policy update, we added some language to a few different sections of our policy to beef up our policy and be in line with current best practices. We then submitted our investment policy to the California Municipal Treasurers Association to their certification program. And I'm happy to report that the city's investment policy received the certified designation with an overall score of 92 out of 100. We had three different independent reviewers look at our policy and deem that we satisfied their 18 different topic areas that are deemed to be best practices for investment policies. So I have to report that. It's the nice certificate that we have. As far as this year's updates to our investment policy, there's just two minor recommended changes. That's just adding one of our authorized investments to the California Asset Management Program, otherwise known as CAM. We're just adding the language to two of our sections on diversification and reporting. And those are the only changes. So with that, I recommend that the council adopt a resolution approving an investment policy and repealing resolution number 38-22. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Make a motion to accept.
Any public comment?
Last thing, say.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Any public comment? Council? Okay, all right. Now you can make your motion.
No, I don't want to do it. No, I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Ashley?
Councilmember Secoys.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to adopt the resolution as presented.
And congratulations, that's a lot of work.
Nice job.
I know, that's wonderful. Thank you. Okay, number eight, Developmental Services Director's report, Jay Slasher, please.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, is that a little bit more degree?
Yeah. Sorry. Different than around about that way.
We have new microphones, so we're not all accustomed to these yet.
The first item I have for you tonight is the storm drain improvements detention center construction project for the airport notice completion. So as we do with all of our capital projects, when we get to the end, the engineering team walks the project with the contractor and addresses any remaining items in accordance with the contract. So we completed that work. So just to remind you what this project was, because it really started last year and mostly was finished before winter set in. And then we were dealing with some final drainage related issues over this very wet winter that we had. But this project was the first phase of a storm drain improvement to the airport that will hopefully culminate here soon with the taxiway relocation and the second set of drains. So that was the project. We completed our walkthrough and have deemed the project complete. So this time we need a notice completion. And I therefore recommend that you approve the notice completion for the storm drain improvements and detention basin construction project for the airport, Phase One, and direct staff to record that document. Happy to answer questions.
Do I have any public comments at this time? Council? I need a motion here.
On the walkthrough, does the FAA do the walkthrough with you or is it?
No, because the FAA is only our regulatory agency. They don't, we run the airport and so they, but the consultant engineer, Todd Ali Engineering, was the consultant hired to manage the project reconstruction. So they absolutely participated with us, so.
And they've been with us for a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Secoys.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote. Motion carried.
Great, thank you. And we have number nine, and you're up again, sir.
So if I, this is for drainage benefit assessment district number 1B formation. May I ask that you open the public hearing at this time?
Is this one?
Yeah.
Public hearing?
So.
Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord, because of Mr. Seigwitz's proximity to this project, he will need to excuse himself in this matter.
Thank you.
He'll excuse himself.
So we'll start with the notice of public hearing correspondence. There was no correspondence received, and it was, it was a 45-day notice that was provided to all of the affected property owners.
All right, so if you're ready, I'll provide my staff report, and then I can walk you guys through this procedure. We've done this a few times, but there's a whole bunch of steps, so.
No, there's three items here, so that's what I was concerned about myself, so.
Very good. Okay, well, as background, this is the second item. We brought this back to you a couple of meetings ago, letting you know that we were going, we intended to form this drainage benefit district. So just as a brief background, drainage benefit districts are similar in nature to our landscape and lighting districts. These are special localized assessment districts that associate a given city-maintained facility with the persons that are being served by that facility. So in this case, the city owns a storm large sump and a pump station on Bailey Court, which is one of our industrial areas here in town. And then that drainage district serves the development in that area. And so what we're proposing to do here is, as a component of the attached RV and mini storage project, which you guys should be aware of, and it's located in the highlighted spot there, they'll be expanding that sump and adding drainage from their site to that facility. And so what we are proposing to do here is to produce a drainage benefit district so that we can assess this new piece of property to help cover the cost of maintaining those drainage facilities. So we've gotten all the way to the point of making a decision tonight about it. We introduced the project in a draft report to you about two months ago, letting you know that we intend, and then you guys adopted a resolution informing the property owners that you intended to create this district. So following that, ballots were mailed to the single property owner, ballots, not being plural, ballot, was mailed to the affected property owner. Who knew that this was coming? This was a condition of the development of the project. And so this action by the city council orders the formation of levy assessments in that drainage benefit district to begin in year 23, '24. So again, on April 3, you all adopted two resolutions initiating these proceedings and sending out the ballots and setting the date for the public hearing to execute this work for tonight. So the total annual maintenance administration cost of the district will be as much as $9,546. It is anticipated they will typically be much lower than that. But the way you set assessment districts is you have to, you have to put the top amount, and then each year they're, they're affected by the actual cost of maintaining the district. So that's the maximum assessment. So with that, we have a little procedure to follow here. And so before I give you my formal recommendation, I will just briefly run you through what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to ask you guys, we're going to ask the clerk to open the ballot that was received. So a physical ballot was mailed to this property owner, and on that ballot, he was alerted to this issue and asked whether he wished to be added to this assessment district with a yes or a no vote. So we'll be opening that ballot and determining whether that property owner wishes to be added to the assessment. If they vote no, you may not proceed any further. If they, of course, their development won't proceed any further either. But if they vote yes, then we will, we will declare those results. We will also finalize the engineer's report. You guys will be asked to, the engineer's report is attached to your staff report. It was produced by consultant staff and reviewed by myself. And then you guys will be, after that's approved, you will be ordering the levy and assessment, the actual addition to the taxation. So with that, I would suggest, Mayor Pro Tim, that you ask the clerk to open the ballot and then.
Public comment first.
Oh, of course. Sorry. That's procedural. You're exactly right. I apologize. So we'll stop there, and that concludes my report. And then after you receive a public comment, we'll go from there.
Okay. Any public comment? None? Council members?
No.
You're not supposed to hear them.
Okay, we'll close the, do I have to pass this? Your hand been closed. I'm new at this, so bear with me, okay? All righty, now you may open the ballot. There you go.
I bet I know what it is.
We only have one, by the way.
Correct. Single property owner is affected by this.
And it is a yes vote.
Okay. Okay, so with that, my first recommendation is that you adopt a resolution in the city council, the city attached fee, declaring the results of the property owner protest ballot proceeding conducted regarding the levy of assessments for drainage benefit assessment district number 1B commencing in fiscal year 23, '24 and approving certain related actions.
Oh, Jay?
Yes?
I could recommend that you adopt all three if you want to.
Very good. Okay, and let me read the remaining two resolutions, and that works for me. Second item is that you adopt a resolution in the city council, the city attached fee, approving and adopting the engineer's report regarding the formation of drainage benefit assessment district number 1B and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto commencing in fiscal year 23, '24. And the third resolution is that you adopt a resolution in the city council, the city attached fee, confirming the formation of the drainage benefit assessment district number 1B and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 23, '24. So we're certifying the results, approving the engineer's report that produces the estimated assessment, and then ordering the levy. So that concludes my report.
And if there's no objection to the council to do them all at once?
Yeah.
I was going to ask, because we had three, I have no objection. Okay.
I will make a motion to approve all three based on the staff's report.
Second.
Ashley?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord?
Yes.
It was a 3-0 vote to adopt the three resolutions as presented with a recusal from Councilmember Secoys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Garrett, now we have a city manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hogan-Cord. A couple of things for you this evening. Is this working okay? Sounds good? New sound system? Awesome.
Sounds good. I'm fine.
So we'll start with the farmer's market. Farmer's Market started on last Thursday. It was extremely well attended. All the vendors, farmers, and the different items were well presented. It was just a great event. We have every Thursday throughout the summer. So thank you to everybody that planned that, participated, and came down to enjoy the nice summer evening with all the city residents and the community alike. So it's a great event. Let's see, city council is aware, of course, is a safe fiasco that's been going on with the Superior Court of Creek County and the courts, Ridgecrest Courts, the Mojave Courts, potentially moving, consolidating certain courts to the community attached people, the attached Mojave area, or maybe the attached Mojave-Rosenman area. It's very confusing. I'd like to thank Judge, presenting Judge Eric Bradshaw. He has hosted three meetings, one last week and two, actually all three were last week. It was Thursday in Bakersfield, one in Rosenman, sorry, Ridgecrest and Mojave on Friday. Judge Bradshaw fell on his sword and said that they had made an error. The problem is, this process has gone too far, almost too far, with the Judiciary Committee out of San Francisco. Very few options the judge has until this Friday to recommend something. We don't know what that recommendation is going to be. The community voiced its concern, its current attached fee, Rosenman, Mojave, Ridgecrest, and many other communities, well-attended meetings. So we'll see what, what the decision is later this week or maybe early next week. But the city council will support whatever decision is made, for sure. But we hope that the right decision can be made and will be made for the court expansion and/or reconstruction. Couple of projects in the city. So Pinion Street, Jay could heavily report, it's complete. So the extension of Pinion Street from the Heritage Oaks area over to Dennison, that has been completed. It's not yet open. We will open that when we, when we're able to do that. There's still some, some items, bunches of items that the contractor must complete before we open that. But I'm suspecting in one to three weeks, we'll be able to have a public ribbon-hatting, quick, short ceremony. I think it's a good time, actually, after school is in recess, and then we don't have these, these large, you know, morning and afternoon traffic incidents that we, that are associated with, with school. So it'll just be a soft summer opening. So we're looking forward to that. Been doing a lot of slurring and painting up city streets. Very proud of that, actually, just all over town. It looks so nice and fresh, and we're maintaining the asphalt. I think we mentioned before, Don Marsh and Jay created a, entirely, created a traffic or pavement index that has really allowed us to move forward maintaining our pavement in a splendid way. Some of the pavement, I think everybody is aware, that has failed, its new pavement. And so we're working with the contractor and the contractor's bonding company or their insurance company to be able to rectify that situation. No decisions have been made yet. I wouldn't expect that that asphalt will be redone this summer. I hope it is, but these things take quite a bit of time. It may be spring before the pavement is redone. So just a note on that. And I'd like to say a special thank you to our police department. Our police department has been without chief for some time now. Jason Dunham, acting lieutenant, has been doing a splendid job. All of the men and women of our police department have stepped up, and they are continuing to keep the city the safest city in current. So I'd like to say a big thank you to, to Hatchfield Police Department for that. And Chief Richard Standridge will be starting with, starting with the city again on June 26th. That's still the target, and we're still moving forward on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council members, do we have any comments or reports? Go.
Go ahead. Start with Keith.
Sorry. Come on.
Yeah.
Okay. Last meeting, I ask about the fence along U.P. tracks of the walking path. Is anything, who can accord there?
So we made contact with Union Pacific, but we don't have any sort of answer for you, but certainly that's something we're still pursuing.
Okay. And also, I think that it really needs to be some cleanup done along Valley Boulevard, the old Newton's facility. There's five or six humps of junk out there, and there's just a haven for raccoons, skunks, and whatever else lives out there. And it's been there for years, and it needs to be cleaned up.
I agree. And as a matter of fact, our code enforcement officer, just in the last two weeks, has made contact with the property owner, and will be working on that, on that contractor and/or property owner will be working towards that. So yeah, thank you.
And the last is, were there curbs and gutters put along the pin asphalt?
No curbing gutter. That was not in the grant. Just paid for pavement. It was dust mitigation.
Okay. What's going to happen when the rain comes and washes across that?
Jay, would you like to come?
Sure.
Yeah. There was extensive drainage facilities constructed on both sides, not curb and gutter, but drainage swales that were armored, meaning rocks were placed in strategic locations to deal with it. And their water is funneled from the south side in either the east-west direction. We did also extend a storm drain on Dennison Road, a couple hundred feet to the south side of the new road, so that it can collect all the drainage coming down. So we don't have curb and gutter, but we do have swales and drainage control in that area.
I don't know what swale is.
It's just a ditch, a ditch. So you've seen them before, they're either paved or unpaved. Sometimes they're just dirt at the edge of a road.
So there's some type of runoff setup?
Yes, it was absolutely considered in the design, and there's a, there's a complete design for controlled runoff water. I mean, again, it's a storm winter like we got last, we always picked up some of the pieces after, stuff like that, but it's, it should be a big shame.
Well, that was asked by some of my constituents, what was going to happen. I was saying that there was no gubs and curbs and gutters.
Yeah.
What was that?
Great.
That's what I had.
I just want to echo Greg's assessment of the farmer's market. Normally, I should, in the past, we show up for the first one, and maybe this farmer or that farmer hasn't come yet, he doesn't have his stuff ready, a lot of the people don't come out. And I went to it kind of thinking, well, it's going to be kind of low-key. I got there at 4:00, and at 4:05, I couldn't even walk around. It was wonderful. All the vendors were there, everybody had stuff to sell, and I, I didn't hear one complaint. I guess maybe there might have been, but, and I saw people and got to visit, and it was just a really fun time. So good job, you guys.
I think Greg took my break there, but anyway, just the slurry seal, I guess that's how you say it. And the striping is coming right along, and I'm wondering when they're going to do my street, because it looks like it has Varico's veins on it. Anyway, and I'm just delighted that it's getting done. It looks really good. Thank you. Phil?
On the striping for the summit area, is that a Caltrans? It's, it's getting down to where the striping's no longer there, to the 118, where you're going to, the pocket turns and stuff on east to west sides of the summit. I assume that's going to be Caltrans doing that, correct?
Most likely it is Caltrans within their right-of-way. It seems like we're consistently the last ones. This is a topic that we bring up to Caltrans, bring to their attention every year. The answer is, they start in the north end of the district and work south every year with their pavement maintenance/painting. Seems to me it would be logical to go from the south to the north because of the snowpaks and things like that. But for some reason, they start north and work their way south. We're anxious to get them in our town. As you know, Tucker Road is State Highway 202, Caltrans, the summit interchange, those sorts of things. Jay will contact them tomorrow. Thank you.
So we'll request next year they start from the south and move north.
We do that here.
We do that every year, he said. All right. The other item, just another announcement regarding truck climbing lanes. On April 28, we had a Zoom meeting with the new CTC director, it's been in the news, regarding, and the CTC director, Mr. Taveras, the District Nine director, Ryan Germany. We had Senator Shannon Grove on the line. We had Greg, Jay, thank you, and myself. And we had a really good, solid discussion for the need for the truck climbing lanes. And we were given verbal commitments that they would put all efforts into that. And then we received some, last Thursday, a in writing commitment from Caltrans District Nine. So this is different than the promise that we've had for the last many, many years. They have committed in writing to fully fund the second segment of three segments, that's between Calienny and Hart Flat, in that area, 3.5 miles. So it's, I think about 62 million, I'm not sure the total cost, but it's a firm commitment that they will be doing all the right-of-way, everything they need to do for getting ready, and they're going to bid in October of '25 now. It was set out at around '27, but we've got a commitment that they have moved it up. So we're going to have monthly meetings now. Senator Grove had an email, said she's anxious to continue with monthly meetings, so that we'll all get together and make sure that everything's moving along firmly and the way we'd like. So any other comments, Greg, on that?
This project would not have happened under this timeline had it not been for Mr. Smith, I think.
Oh, and Director, and Director Hakimi.
And Director Hakimi.
Exactly. Director Hogan-Cord.
Jay and others, quite frankly, bottom line, City attached, bottom line. The first monthly meeting that the city insisted on to keep us on schedule is tomorrow, tomorrow morning. So we're looking forward to getting the group and better understanding, you know, more details as we move forward. And additionally, in addition to the truck climbing lanes, so the down, you know, westbound will be repaid. So that's another $116 million also. So that's another $116 million also. So they're going to combine those two projects, the climbing lanes coming east of the hill and the repaving going downhill. So we've got over $200 million, closer to $250 at the end of the day, in about two years. So we're really excited and thank all of our partners.
It's finally here, it's our turn. And on the, you'll notice right now, they're doing emergency repairs. They're doing blanket patches where they're cutting up panels of concrete and putting asphalt, concrete asphalt, asphalt concrete, AC overlay. But this is a temporary until the project starts, I believe, in 2025, on the total rehabilitation of between here and Keene. The two projects are going to be combined somehow. So very excited about that. And like you said, Jay, thank you so much, and our thanks to Aaron Hakimi, and a big thanks to Senator Shannon Grove being on the committee on our Zoom meeting. And I think all of those combined, like you say, really tip the scales in our favor. And the fact that we've just collaborated with so many entities, and they've decided they'll be paid out of Caltrans money. We've been trying for grants and that, and those always go to a bigger city somewhere in California, and you never have enough points to compete. So this is a good, a good project for them to fund completely, and we really thank them.
State Highway 58 now is the second highest traveled truck traffic in the entire state. It was number three just last week, it was elevated to number two.
Wow.
Okay, anything more?
That's it.
Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session at this time.
I'd like to make another comment. I'm going to say thank you for the yellow striping on Valley Boulevard. For me, from Curry to Valley, we now have stripes. There's still two big potholes on Snyder and Valley. Whenever you come up and make the little hook, they're getting bigger and bigger. And there's still one on Dennison, South Dennison and Tatchby Boulevard. Somebody's going to have a wreck, because they're just getting way too big. And it's, it's just because there's not enough highway there with cars to make that, that would turn.
We'll take care of it. Thank you.
Okay, and I want to thank Phil Smith. He's been working on the 58 project for almost 35 years, by the way. I don't know if you know that, but that's a long time to stick with something, and we appreciate it very much. It was necessary. Now we adjourn to closed session, and we'll come back and let anybody know what transpired or the.